Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Roxbury Inland Wetlands and Water Courses Commission on Tuesday, April 26, 2022. I'll call the meeting to order. Rob, you want to start?
Rob Horgan.
John Smollett.
Lenora?
Lenora Palatnick.
Anybody else? I'm Russ D'Enzo, and I chair the commission, and we do have a quorum. Remembering Andy Angle is a tough one for me. Andy passed away suddenly. He had a heart attack doing the thing that he loved the best, and that was bike riding, other than carpentry. Andy was a great guy, as we all know. He had a great personality. He was very laid back, and he was really a rock for me all the years on the commission that he served. Andy was also on the Board of Finance. He served on the Board of Education for a number of years. He married his childhood sweetheart, Pat. They met each other in seventh grade. He had a wonderful family, two great boys, and he built his own house in Roxbury. And he will be sorely missed. It's a shame he died so suddenly and at such a young age, when he had so much to give. And that's all I could say about it, other than I will miss Andy a lot. I know we all will. Knowing him made me a better person, and I'll never forget him. Anybody else? If I missed anything?
Yeah, Russ, I'll just add, you know, I'm on the border of Roxbury Land Trust, and Andy was a tremendous help to us. He was a great volunteer. He helped build trails, construct foot bridges. Most recently, the new Volunteers' Bridge that we have, he designed and built those steps. They go up the one side there himself. And on our workdays, Pat would send them off with a supply of scones for us, and we really appreciated that, too. So, yeah, we're gonna miss Andy greatly.
Yeah. Anybody else?
He was a good people's person. He always made everyone feel welcome. I appreciated that.
Yeah, he did.
Yeah.
I remember once I asked him to come up to my house, because I had a disagreement with him about the first selectmen's salary. I knew first selectmen coming in at the same salary Barbara was getting. And he came up, and I gave him my whole spiel. And he calmly looked at me and said, you know, Russ, I hear what you're saying, but I disagree with you. So where's this maple bourbon you were telling me about? And it went from there. So I will miss Andy, that's for sure. All right, any communications with the public? Anybody from the public have anything they want to share with the commission? No? Okay, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting from March 22nd? Everybody read them?
Yeah, I move to approve the minutes.
Oh, I will seat Lenora for Sue. Okay, we're not going to talk about replacing Andy for a little while. It's a little too raw still. But I'm gonna seat Lenora for Sue. So, Rob, you made a motion. Do I have a second on the minutes?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Valeris, 91 North Street, NOV Dam Creative in Brook. John, Cody, are you here?
Yes, sir.
Oh, great. Did you go look at it, John?
Yeah, Russ, I actually did. Like he stated, that the earthen part of the dam is removed. There is concern with the massive amount of brush that is now acquired, has accumulated on both sides of the bank, and several piles that are not on the bank but well within the 100 feet, it's probably like 15 feet from the thing. There's a tremendous amount of brushes accumulating there. We need to address that.
And it's cut brush that was thrown there?
Yeah, it's all cut small trees, branches, brush, shrubbery like that, big, big piles. He's just disposing it right on the banks.
And that peninsula that shuts out there, is that natural, or?
It appears to be, yeah.
Okay, all right. Well, then ask him to get all that brush out of there. That's debris. It's considered. You're not supposed to do that. That's all. If he does that, we'll lift the NOV.
Okay, sounds very good. He is away, though. He's in London, so I have his email. I'll reach out to him, touch base, and advise you as how that goes.
Yeah, and he could hire somebody, you know. It wouldn't be that expensive.
It's just some manual labor. It's not, you know, backbreaking.
Yeah. All right, let's move on.
Russ, do you want to go over the report for the regulated, non-regulated permits?
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, yeah, I didn't see that. That's what's next. Go ahead, John.
It's the same thing.
Yeah. Let's go to John's report.
Well, that's just the paper that I sent in. It should be uploaded. It's the Enforcement Officer Report, Administrative Approvals.
There you go.
We got, yeah. As you see, it's a, these are all non-regulated.
Wow.
Yeah, yeah, we're off to a good start once again already. Nothing exciting, you know, mostly generators, a couple of small little bump outs on the houses, a deck here and there.
Lot of pools.
Oh, my God, pools. We got more coming in. It's crazy.
Yeah, I heard you can't even get a pool guy for this summer.
I know. That's what I'm hearing. Not good.
And another 15 years, I'll be yanking them out, right?
Well, we'll be talking about that later on.
That's right. On Rainy Hill Road, somebody had a driveway pipe that crossed the driveway and discharged into a little low area. And that pipe must have gotten clogged up, so they just let it go straight ahead, that discharged directly onto the road on Rainy Hill. So John got a hold of them today. They live in Hong Kong, so it took them a while to get back to us. But John, you're following up with the contractor to get that fixed, right?
Yeah, it's done.
Oh, okay, good.
Contractor's fantastic, the homeowner, another fantastic person, reached out to her. She got back to me like within five minutes, gave me the contact information for the contractor, talked to him, and he sent me pictures, and he did it today.
Okay, why did he do what he did in the first place? Just a simple solution?
Yeah, he didn't do it. Some other, I think the landscapers there did or something. The plow guy apparently rearranged all the gravel and locked up everything. So they just did a really quick bad fix, and he restored it to the original way. And their setting was, there was an original pipe that crossed from years ago, and that was just clogged up. So we cleaned that up, restored everything back the way it was, and we should be fine with that.
Okay, great.
Yeah, it was a win.
Good job. Busy month.
Busy day.
So we'll go on to Swanson? Lenora and I, yeah, that's it. Lenora and I went out and looked at this on a beautiful day. It was good spending time with Lenora. And we really don't have a problem with this. But Paul, is the house on this?
On the print?
Yeah, is the house part of this application?
No, it's not. We were just trying to get this first stage done, get the driveway and get the pipe crossing. And then we have the approximate location right there where Brian put it on the print, but we're, we had some sort of plans together, but I don't have a house plan drawn up, so we didn't bother to move that step. I'm just trying to, you know, for me to get the time. So I'm trying to get the time, get this part done, and then we'll move forward to the house.
Okay. Lenora, you want to make a motion?
I motion to approve.
As a regulated activity?
As a regulated activity.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Great, thank you.
Okay, Neil Rusko.
Okay.
160 Painter Hill Road.
Right, would you put the drawing up so we could see? There you go. Could you move it down a little? Okay, so Lenora, we were in the right spot. And you could see that the proposed driveway is, is it, Brian, are you here? Were you on this, Brian? Or Neil? Nobody's here? Well, okay, we saw where the septic is going. You see that, Lenora, little green boxes?
Yes.
And we walked in front of that ledge. Apparently, they're going around it, and they're behind it. And then it wasn't really well marked for us. And we couldn't tell, like, the flags really weren't well done. But my guess is that it goes on that old wood road that we walked down to after we climbed up and over that ledge.
Right.
And nobody's here for this?
Brian's not here. I just double checked.
Okay, I don't know. Lenora, are you comfortable? I'm not. I think I want to go back out there.
Could we table this until later, in case someone shows up?
Oh, yeah, we don't have to throw it away, and we got 65 days anyway, so we don't have to act on it. We don't need to table it. We could just wait. But I think other commission members, if you have the time, should go look at this.
I'll go look.
What is that? Dorothy D. Bolt Road, when you pass that going towards Painter Ridge Road before Moosehorn, there's two houses after Dorothy D. Bolt. And then, right next to the second house, you'll see where there's flags, where the driveway goes in. It's right up against those wetlands, as you could see.
Right.
The problem we have is those wetlands is a viable, highly productive swamp. So it's not like just wetland or just skunk cabbage growing, because it's mucky. It's a swamp. It's a really pristine viable swamp. I think he can't go in from the north, because I see a lot of big ledge there. You know, we talked about maybe he could use the neighbor's driveway, but if I'm the neighbor, I'm not really into that. But it's just other people on the commission really need to look at this. Now, when you walk up and you see where the septic has been dug, the mistake we made, we thought the driveway went in front of the ledge.
Yeah.
But you go straight past and go on the other side of the ledge, and you'll see an old, an old travelway, like an old dirt road. And I could see now that the house is at the end of that. But there were no flags to it, so we didn't know. And boy, that's a long way to the septic system. So that's what threw us off. We thought it was going up on the ledge. And there would need to be a lot of blasting.
Right.
And there may need to be blasting, right where the corner is. I don't see how they're getting through that ledge without blasting it.
Russ, if you say it wasn't well marked, should we ask that it is marked better?
Yeah, I mean, I should have brought the map with me, and if I had the map, I would have figured it out. But I forgot the map.
Are the wetlands marked?
No, but you clearly, you clearly see this beautiful swamp with all kinds of frogs and amphibians running around. And the driveway is butt up against it.
Yeah.
No, it discharges under the road to another big vernal pool on the other side. You know that big vernal pool on Painter Ridge in that area?
Yes.
Yeah, this is on the other side of the road. It probably was all, used to be one, one big vernal pool until the town put a road right through it, back when you could do things like that.
So this wetland, you think, is a vernal pool?
No, actually, it's not. It's a huge swamp, though, and I don't, I think it's pretty shallow, and it probably doesn't support fish life. So it acts like a vernal pool, but it never dries up. I don't think it ever dries up, unless we're in a drought situation. All right, so we'll see if somebody comes on. If not, Julie, would you leave Karen a note to email Neil or Brian and just mark up where the house is and where the driveway is? Because we followed the flags in, and they seem to end at the septic system. And then we saw flags going straight north from the septic system, which led us to believe that that's where the house is going.
Right.
And I'd like to ask questions of how, where's the septic pipe? I would assume it's going to follow that whole driveway down.
I asked her to email Neil and to mark up the full driveway, including the house site, and that you need to know where the septic is.
And they should come to the, no, I know where the septic is. They should come to the next meeting with an application that's sensitive. And other members really need to look at it. So we wouldn't vote tonight, anyway.
Okay.
All right, I'd like to ask how this lot came to be, too, because I thought he owned two lots. I didn't know there was a third. It's a rough lot, though. It's all wetland and ledge. So, all right, on to the next.
Okay. And let me, give me a moment. And that is going to be... And I need to just get back and share.
It's all right, take your time. It's a beautiful roof you got in that room.
Well, thank you.
Talk about carpentry. Wow.
Yeah, I know, guy. So there you go. 183 River Road.
So are we under new business now?
We are under new business.
Okay, so Victoria Shaw, 183 River Road, wants to move evasives, remove evasives, I believe.
That's right. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good to see you again.
Yep, did a great job down there on Lower Falls Road.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that.
Boy, what a difference.
Yeah, thank you. So this is really the larger scale version of that on a really beautiful piece of property that Victoria Shaw has. So what we're proposing is two separate projects and one application. One project, which that map is up on the screen right now, the eastern portion of the property that is along the Shipog River, we'd like to execute this portion of the project in the 2022 season. And if you look at the next map, but we'll go right back to this map to discuss it further, that's the west side of the river, and unfortunately, the acre overlays did not come in correctly. But that project, we'd like to execute in the 2023 season. So going back to the first map, the blue areas.
Just to make sure we're on the same page, it's really one project that you want to do over a period of time.
That's right. That's right.
So, because if you're going to call it two separate projects, by regulation, you're going to need two separate applications. But I see this is, right, you're, you know, once you get approval with the new, with the new change to the regulation, you get 14 years. I really don't agree with the new change, but that's what it is.
Understood.
Yep.
So what we're looking at executing is there's four zones of management here on the map. The green areas are areas that are more than 100 feet away from Little Jack's Brook, which is that little section in between that's not zoned in between the two blue zones that are 1.7 acres and 5 acres. And the green areas are, right, that's what I mentioned, the green areas. The blue areas are within the regulated area. The mugwort patches are all within the regulated area. And so same thing with the Japanese knotweed pins. And the pins are about 10 foot by 10 foot patches of knotweed. So there's about a 30 by 30 foot section of knotweed in the far northwest corner. So what we're proposing is that in April or May, to spot spray the existing barberry shrubs with a rodeo solution, 2%, which is similar to what we did with the knotweed at Laura Sachs. And then in April or May, the forestry mowing would commence within the regulated, unregulated areas. Then in June, there would be the first knotweed or mugwort application, and that would also be a rodeo solution. Then in July, sometime between July and September, depending on how the season goes precipitation wise, we will spot spray the re-sprouting invasive. So that will look very similar to what happened at Laura Sachs. So the, you know, the invasive plants will be about basketball size, and will go around. This time, it will be with a John Deere gator with a tank mounted sprayer as opposed to backpack sprayers because of the scale of the project, and spot spray those invasive plants to minimize herbicide use. And then in September, we will execute the Japanese knotweed application, and that will also be with a rodeo solution. I want to mention, too, and I forgot to do that, with the forestry mode areas, we'll be using a garlon free a solution that's similar to what we did at Laura Sachs as well. So that's triclopiur based herbicide. In 2023, with this section of the project, we will be treating any re-sprouting invases that are left and any germinating invases, and we'll be doing as per program, a mugwort and knotweed application with the same seasonal timing. And then from second year on, we're working at phase down with the seed latency, and then any remaining clonal propagules of the mugwort and the knotweed. The only two known clonal invasive plants on the property are the mugwort and the knotweed, and those are the ones that are going to need the most amount of attention.
Everything else, the areas that you spray, then nothing will be growing there for a while, right?
It depends on the site. So the mugwort sites, there is grass in between the mugwort. So we're going to be doing a very highly targeted application. And if possible, depending on site conditions after the first year, we'd like to replant that area with grass. That's going to allow for maximum soil retention, maximum recovery, and maximum reduction in the mugwort population. The knotweed area.
Right, but are they going to make a lawn, and then they're going to put pesticides and nitrogen and?
No, the owner's goal, and the owner is on the call, the owner is priority, is to reduce the invasive plants to maximize the capability of native plants growing to fill the void. So the only areas that are in lawn space or space that could become a lawn, but preferably a meadow, are the mugwort areas. The other areas, the blue areas, they're either dense forest, poor forest, early succession forest, or riverbank. Those areas, we'd like to retain the natives that will be there. So we would tag all natives before any clearing were to be executed. And those natives would be avoided. These are, those are shrubs or trees or saplings. And then in following seasons, we would ensure our applications are accurate enough to avoid as many natives as possible. And if the commission prefer on the riverbank areas, we could always contract with a native plant nursery like Earth Tones to replant those areas with native plants.
I would prefer that. Anybody have any questions?
What do you mean? I'm sorry, this is Victoria Shaw. I didn't hear what you said, Russ, about prefer not what?
I would prefer planting native species on the stream bank if it's necessary. It might not be. You need to keep an eye on it. We don't want it to start eroding. And I know you don't either, Victoria. I mean, I applaud you for doing this. It's really driving around today, the amount of barberry out there in the woods. It's just, it seems like it's overtaking everything.
It is.
And it's unfortunately, something doesn't eat it.
Yeah, right, right. Well, I'm interested in doing, and one reason I was thrilled to find Christian, is that I really am interested and very dedicated to the idea of native plants and dealing with potential problems as early as you possibly can in terms of erosion and everything else. And I participate in the Pollinator Pathway that leads down to the River Road property. And I've had this property, I bought it from Joan McMahon, who, as you know, is one of the, was one of the major donors to the land trust.
Yes.
And it's a very special place to me. So
It is.
I am, you know, doing this as intelligently as I know how to do. And I'm learning as I go, as this process proceeds in terms of some of the details. Just as background, I'm on the board of Audubon, Connecticut, and Audubon, New York, both of whom are, which are deeply involved in native plants and relationships to birds and pollinators and blah, blah, blah. So I assure you that we'll approach this with all due care.
Oh, we know. We just, we need to ask the right questions, so there's no misunderstandings. And you found a good guy in Chris, because he's done a, you know, I'm involved in Bridgewater in Washington, and he's done a couple of projects, and they've all turned out really well. Japanese knotweed is really difficult, and he's one of the few that's really gotten a handle on it. I've seen people spend a lot of money trying to control it and unsuccessfully, but I think he's found some kind of method that seems to be working. It certainly looks a lot better on Falls Road than it did. But I know Laura goes out there all the time and pulling stuff by hand, but she's a hardy soul. So anybody from the commission have any questions or concerns?
No, I'm good, Russ. And yeah, I think this is a good project worthwhile.
I'm good with it.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve this as a conservation activity, meaning there's no fee, the fee will be waived, because it is a conservation activity. And I know the commission wants to encourage this kind of stuff. So that's my motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Thanks a lot.
Good seeing you, Victoria.
Nice to see you, too.
Yeah.
Bye-bye.
Bye. Bye.
Bear with me one second. I've gotta unstick the map again.
Take your time. Uh, while, while you're doing that, I wanted to ask, uh, John, Rob and Lenora, do we want to go back to live? Or do we want to keep doing it this way? Um, a lot of the town's going back to live and it's all hybrid. So people's come in on Zoom. Including a commission member who might get tied up and could only join by Zoom. Um, or do, you know, what's your thoughts? Cause that's what Pat asked me. Nobody cares either way. I thought this way is easier for everybody.
I like the Zoom.
Yeah, I, I do too. I mean, I, I think if we get a major application, it'd be good to have a, in live meeting. And it'd be good to see each other. So we could go from there.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Sorry, I'm having some technical difficulty. I do not like the Zoom. The, the new hybrid system is so much easier to use and I am currently stuck right now. And hitting page down and it's going sideways.
All right, yeah, your, your computer, give it a minute to, to catch up. It's behind.
I don't want to do that. Um, it's not end meeting for all. Nope, we're not doing that. So Okay. Come on. Oh, all right. I'm getting somewhere. There. All right, now we're getting somewhere.
Who's next?
It's going to be, uh, 44 Booth Road. And so let me just get to the page. I had to move this agenda had 118 pages with it.
Yikes.
Oh, yeah.
Even the computer's mad.
Even the computer's mad. Okay, it's, here you go. So I don't know if you can start to see it.
We could see it.
Okay.
So what is it they're doing? What's this proposal for?
This proposal is for brush clearing and regulated area with rip rap and a wall installation. So I'm not, I don't dare go to-
I think you're, I think you're on, um, you're on the pool demolition application on Route 67. Yeah, okay. Is that next?
Oh, yeah, it jumped over. Sorry about that. Okay, so here we go. Um, that's where we got stuck.
There you go. Okay.
Let's make it a little bit bigger. Okay, so you're looking at the job. It is on 44 Booth Road. Clear invasives and vines. And brush along the edge of the moat field at Stonewall Rip Rap along a roding uphill edge of Silk Pond to stabilize edge.
Okay. Jeff, are you here? I thought I saw him before.
I thought I saw it too. Gardens.
Yeah, Gardens. Are you here, Jeff? You gotta unmute.
Yep, he's still here.
Okay, you hear, you hear me now?
There you go. Yeah, you're good. So what do you want to do here, Jeff?
Um, I'd like to see the, uh, the overall plan. It'll be easy to talk you through it. Um, if this is really big, so you got to make that smaller. That's, yeah, there we go. That's, that's the drawing there. Okay, so 44 Booth Road, Indian Landscape Contractor out there for all probably almost two years of development of the property. We did some masonry and planting, extensive planting around the house on the left. We, uh, personally like to continue to develop the property. Um, and there's two things that we'd like to do. Um, one is doing some brush clearing of invasives. That's, uh, indicated by the area marked 10 on the plan in pink. Uh, on the top border and the bottom border. It's within the hundred foot setback, but we don't really want to clear anything in the, in the, in the wetlands except a little bit of handwork. Uh, John met me up there last month. And originally talked about trying to do this by hand, but it's really too much to do. So what we'd like to do is come in from the south and tow a chipper in, into the property with a rubber, uh, tracked mini excavator with a mulching head on it and staying on-
Jeff, when you say come in from the south, where, where would that be?
To the right.
Okay, where number nine is, that area?
Oh, yeah, be, behind that, uh, directly to the right.
All right. And there's already access into that area?
There is. That's clear the, uh, to the erosion property who've given us commit, uh, permission to come in there. So we'd be coming in not crossing any of the regulated areas until we get up clear where we're doing the clearing. So the chipper and the, um, mini excavator would stay-
Now, why, why are you doing the clearing?
Because, um, I've got some photographs here, uh, from the, from the, the house if we could find those. Um, but there's, there's areas of brush and invasives along the tree line, which borders the meadow. And we'd like to clear back 10 or 12, 20 feet. So we have views back into the trees and not, um, have this just square thing with all this stuff growing. So if you, if you find the pictures I sent, uh, you can see what-
Well, maybe you could share your screen. It's kind of hard for, cause she's got to go through a hole.
Actually, there are, there were, were no pictures attached to what was uploaded when I reviewed it earlier. So.
That's all right, Jeff. We gotta go look at this anyway. We, we need to look at this anyway. It's better to look at it than to look at pictures.
Be happy to meet someone, uh, there and walk you through it. Um, it's, uh, so there's the clearing of the brush, uh, bases. There's a lot of barberry, uh, uh, multi floor rows, kind of the whole thing, burning bush.
Yeah.
Yes, with along the borders. And then there's this brushman, kind of like to clean up some of the the wooded area there, which is very pretty. That number nine area, which is non-regulated, uh, is, uh, an area they want to create a seating area back there. And they want to have mode paths through the field and start to use the property. So it's almost a 50 acre parcel. Um, so there's the clearing, uh, job number one and job number two where, towards the left of the upper pond, which is I call the Silk Pond. The uphill border of that, which is a little yellow stripe on it is eroding badly. The drainage from the site and there's-
Where, where's this? Um-
Number seven is the left.
Number seven. Yeah, I see the yellow now. Okay, yep.
So that's-
So let, let's, um, let's set up a sidewalk. That's the thing to do. We only accept the application right now and then we could meet with you and then the next meeting, we could, the commission members could ask questions. Unless if anybody has questions now, it's pretty straightforward, but-
I, I just have a question. The, the pink areas, the number 10 areas, those are upland areas? Or are, uh, those are review, review areas right now? I don't see, I, I don't see any other wetlands other than the blue areas.
There's wetlands. Yeah, there's, um, coming from the big, the bigger pond, there's a, uh, stream or stream channel that runs, that exits left to right on the drawing. You should see the dotted line.
I see it. Yep.
No, it's, 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 um, what, it's a-
So the dotted line is a stream.
That's correct.
Small stream that feeds the two ponds. Yeah.
No, 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 that exits the ponds. It's, the ponds basically are site, uh, drain, street, street-
Yeah.
Street water and that sort of thing. And then the lower area is, uh, where we want to clear along is more of a swamp. But there's a dotted line that shows the edge of the wetlands there.
All right. Rob, you want to go?
Yeah, I'll go. You want to go with me?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
We'll see you next meeting.
Okay, great.
Um, well, your, your email on the application, we should add emails on the application.
Um, should be.
Um, were you emailed a copy of the agenda?
Yes.
Ben Karen has your email.
All right, great. We'll email you, okay?
Yeah, great.
All right, great. Thanks.
Yeah, good night.
So what's next? The structure of the pool?
Um, 53 South Berry Road.
Yes. Now, for the commission, this is the old no good property. Where is a big to do because they cut all the trees down next to Lake Laureate. And, um, they wanted to build this big pool with the waterfall that Peter Schoenholz was crying over, remember?
Yeah, I remember.
Rightly so.
I remember.
And remember, we had to hire a structural engineer to prove to us that that pool would actually be supported. And the structural engineer came in and told us it would. Well, the pool cracked. So they started-
Engineer, Russ?
I forget. I mean, they're hard to find, but you remember this project, right?
Yeah, we had Steve Trinkus review it for us, didn't we?
Right, but, but we made the applicant hire a structural engineer because Steve's not a structural engineer. And Steve had said, the reason why we hired a structural engineer or made the applicant hire is because Steve said, there's no way that pool could be supported by what they got. And the pool is cracked beyond repair. So they want to fill it in. They were all ready to go, but Mr. Cody came flying in with his, with his cape. And he, he stopped them and said, you need a permit. Um, so this is the permit. Um, is anybody here to talk about this? Nobody's showing up.
No one's showing up.
None of the applicants is showing up tonight. Um, install two rows of silk fence, bring in a hydraulic hammer, which means you're gonna bang the hell out of it, right, Rob? You're gonna crush it in place, cross the pool floor, level all concrete with debris in the bottom of the hole. So they're gonna throw all the concrete in the hole, chuck in clean fill. Place it in the hole of, on top of the concrete.
Doesn't this have all like the, the waterfalls and the-
Yes, yes.
Yeah, the gunited banks and everything. Is all that proposed to come out too?
It's not showing that.
Wow. And, and they're gonna stabilize this, right?
Well, I mean, they're not gonna do it if they're gonna leave loose concrete on the bottom of the hole. They could come, they could come pack till their cows come home, but unless they break it up enough, it's, right, Rob?
And this is like way up on the hill, right?
Yeah, this is, this is on a cliff, which is-
So how do they get the machinery up there and, and? I don't know. What a nightmare.
Well, we should go look at it. And in the meantime, I'll have John contact them and ask them for a construction plan, a better. I mean, what about that wall? That's right on top of the swamp. I mean, how are you gonna keep all that stuff from rolling down a 25% slope? You're not. I mean, you're gonna put up two, two rows of silk fence and all that concrete's gonna go rolling right, uh, right beyond it. It's gonna be a landslide. And yeah, what about the falls? Are you leaving the falls, um?
Is this, who's the engineer on this? I can't, I can't see on the bottom of this map.
It's John when I flew up.
Oh, it's Brian.
Yeah, we need to have Brian here next meeting to talk to him about this. I can't hear whoever's talking. Maybe Julie's right about Zoom.
Hey, we're getting a lot of feedback on this.
And, and John, you're coming in and out. I don't know why.
The only, um, reverberation I'm getting right now is actually nobody is lit up.
All right, John, go ahead. Try to, try to talk. You're on, you're on mute. Yeah, he's not. It's, it's something wrong with your end, John. But anyway, we need Brian to come in here and Rob, you and I might as well take a ride there once we go to the other side.
Sounds good, Russ.
All right. What's next, Julie?
Um, that's it, but you have one application if you'd like to add it to the agenda. For, uh, 220 Painter Hill Road.
Is there a boost in me?
Who's the, who's the applicant?
Uh, Pels Matthews.
Okay. I'll make a motion, uh, um, somebody's, somebody's going in and out. There you go. I'll make a motion to add Pels Matthews to the agenda.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Pels, is this a property, uh, with the pond that we had that deal with? Same property, right?
Yes, it is. The, these are, um, I'm coming to you for, um, three additional, uh, pieces of work. Um, all of which are in the upland review area. Um, the, uh, the main one is a pool installation in back. Uh, the second is to add a carport to the side of the garage, uh, just on either sonotubes or screw in piers. And the other is to add a, a deck on the other side of the house. Again, also on sonotubes or screw in piers.
The back of the house?
No, the, this, the front side of the house, I don't, I don't know. Uh, if you look at the house from the road, it looks like a wedding cake that somebody's cut off one side of the cake.
Yeah.
And so I, what I, what I'd like to do is add a, um, wood deck. You can see the drawing I, I made there with our, if you go through the application. I sent you kind of probably more than you need, uh, which included, uh, part of the pool, uh, application. Not needed for your records really, but I just sent you the whole file. But if that, on that left edge of the garage is where I'd like to add a carport. The driveway is very, very difficult to turn around. It's about a six point turn. And, you know, in-
How many acres is it?
Four point, uh-
And you gotta do a six point turn.
Yeah, I mean, I, at this point, I have re-seated and re-sotted the sides of the driveway about 10 times in less than a year. So, you know, part of it, part of it is additional car parking. Part of it is also to make the turnaround bigger.
Just put a flag where the pool's going, a flag where the carport's going. So we'll go look at it. You don't need to be there. It's easier for us to just go, um, and if you're there, great. If you're not, we just want to look and then we'll go.
Yeah, the pool is staked, the wetlands are staked in the back. Uh, I will put stakes in the ground for, uh, both the carport, the additional turnaround and the, uh, and the, the deck. All easy for me to do.
Okay.
You have, uh, Paul Samansky's drawing, which has all my setbacks and everything on it.
Right, right.
Took, took me-
I'll remember to bring it. So everything is in, out of the, uh, regulated zone except for the pool?
Uh, no, all of it's inside the hundred feet, uh, regulated zone. Um, but none of it is inside of 50 feet. And man, remember this, this hillside is basically a lot of poorly draining soils.
Oh, yeah, I see it. Okay.
There's no act, yeah, there's no active water or, or wetlands. The pond is really the only active water on the property.
Right.
But, uh, you know, it's, it is in, the, the whole lot is basically in the regulated zone.
Okay, we'll, we'll go look in our travels.
Yep, and I'm, I'm happy to talk to you about it if you want. You'll see there's an access way.
No, it looks pretty straightforward. I could read the map, so.
And it, it has to happen sequentially. I can't do, uh, I can't do the carport until after the pool is done, because that's the access way to get to the back.
There's no rush.
Okay.
So.
The rush is.
All right, thank you, Pels.
I, I did find a pool installer, so.
Wow, you're lucky.
That, that's the only, that's the only one, yeah.
Yikes.
Not, not easy, as you mentioned.
Yeah, no, it's a rough time right now. Glad I own a house.
Any question?
All right, is there anything else? Uh, any commission members have anything? No? I'll look for a motion or adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
See you all next meeting.
Take care.
Take care.
Bye.